If you'd stand and join us in the Pledge of Allegiance. Our first item tonight is a presentation of the Carbon County Employee of the Month. We'll turn the time to Rose.
Commissioners, our employee of the month is, um, excuse me, I've still lost my voice a little bit here, is Jade Jensen. And Denise Nelson nominated him several months ago, so he's been on the list for a while, but I would like to turn the over, the time over to her to explain why. I know Daniel's going to say some things and probably Julia as well, so come on Jade, you don't need to be so shy.
Denise has asked that I speak for her. Yes, it is on behalf of our office, but mainly for Denise. Jade has taken on a huge task converting all the land classes from these old books we have into GIS form. That is a huge task, it's very time-saving for our office, and I was also just recently told that he was asked to present that at a GIS conference, and they were very impressed with the accomplishment and the product on how it turned out. So we just wanted to recognize him for his hard work and appreciate what he did for us.
Daniel?
Recently, with the changes that was made, Jade got moved over to the Road Department and to do GIS work there, and he's going to be a welcome to our team. He's got a lot of knowledge and he's an ambitious young man and looking forward to working with him, so every time I've ever asked Jade to do anything, he's went up and beyond and doesn't ask any questions, just does it, and it's done better than I could have expected, so.
Very good.
He's a valid employee, so.
Commissioner Potter, I wonder, could we have Jade, Rose, could we have Jade actually explain the scripting and the process that he's done to automate basically what the Recorder's and Assessor's Office will be using on the GIS? Not to put you on the spot, but please help the rest of us understand what you've done.
So pretty much, rather than tracing a line by hand, which is subject to error and lots of other things, and it's a really cognitive process, we've made it to where the script and the computer can actually make the line for you, which is pretty cool.
And so when certain things are recorded or certain changes are made, it's now automatic instead of requiring another step, so this is an efficiency?
Yes, so, so basically, we can take that whole layer that we made, and with the other script, we can split it with the parcel layer, and so a person doesn't have to manually do that, it'll automatically do that every day.
So instead of things taking a couple days to eventually happen, now they're automatic?
Now they're automatic, or automagic.
I'd like to add too that, just going to our classes at the State Tax Commission, there was maybe only two or three counties in the state of Utah that has done what he has done, so it's pretty incredible.
Great job, thank you.
Thank you Jade. Appreciate your hard work on that. Commissioners, our next item is to approve minutes, and we do have five sets of those that we need to go through. Let's start with October 18th of 2017, if there are any changes or corrections in that one.
I saw no changes, I'll make a motion to approve.
I was excused from this meeting.
I did not have any changes either, I will step down and make, and second that. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Next one, Commissioners, is November 1st. Any changes there?
I didn't see any changes, I'll make the motion to approve.
I'll second that.
All in favor?
Aye.
Third one then was on November 13th.
I as well didn't find any changes that needed to be made.
This one's not near long enough, there's only a half a page here, but I'll second that.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Next one then would be November 14th.
Again, no changes, I'll make a motion to approve.
And I'll second that.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. And our next one is December 1st of 2017.
I found no changes, I'll make the motion.
Seconded.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Thank you.
Guess we ought to thank Lori for her great job of the minutes.
Yes, thank you very much.
Good.
That's always good. Our next item then is a discussion and a consideration of a motion to decline to impose the municipal services levy increase and collecting and assessing levy increase. Commissioners, we held a public hearing, opened a public hearing, left it open, we will continue that after the six o'clock hour and make any, you know, close that off so that we have everything according to the state statutes. But at this point in time, we said that we would discuss that, and we'd like to open that up to the two of you for any thoughts and a possible motion.
Any comments?
I don't have any comments.
Just after a lot of deliberation and reviewing everything, just as Commissioner Potter mentioned with the open houses and the public hearing, we first went out to the public with the idea of what it would take if we did a tax rate increase to continue the services as they are. The response overwhelmingly has been in opposition to solving the issue through a tax rate increase, so I'll go ahead and make the motion that we decline to impose the municipal services levy and the collecting and assessing levy increase.
So we have a motion, any other thoughts or discussions before we take a second?
I guess we'll get into this a little bit more later on in the evening, but this doesn't solve the entire problem, this gives, this allows us some, some time to work at a little more, but I'll second the motion.
And before I call for a vote on that, I would say the same, that in the six o'clock hour as we open our public hearings, we'll make mention of this short discussion of the motion that was made, and then be able to close off our public hearing. So if there's not any other discussion, the motion is to decline to impose the municipal services levy and also the assessing and collecting levy. All in favor?
Aye. Aye.
Commissioners, for the record, the motion is to decline to impose the increase to those levies.
That is correct.
Correct.
Thank you. Our next item then is a review and possible approval of an interlocal agreement with the Southeastern Utah Association of Local Governments regarding funding for the Carbon County Senior Center. Debbie, we'll turn the time to you.
So I received a new contract that is an increase of just over $4,000 for the nutrition fund and another increase of over $4,000 for the socialization fund, so we just need that new contract signed, and I don't think we want to reject that money, so.
No, where, where did it come from?
I don't know, but let's not argue.
As I read the contract, there wasn't any real reason put forward other than just a reallocation, so.
Yeah, it's a reallocation of some sort, and they didn't give me any explanation on that, so.
So our, our association every year goes and negotiates over 98 different grants, and this being part of that, they, you know, are just becoming more effective in what they're doing, so.
None of them.
Like you said, we don't want to decline additional funding.
No.
I'll make a motion to approve the agreement with the Southeastern Utah Association of Local Governments.
Okay, can we get two copies of that signed so that I can get that back to them?
Looks like Rita has them right here, so.
There we go.
We have a motion.
And a second?
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Thank you Debbie. Next item is discussion and possible approval of Resolution 2017-09 rescinding Carbon County's withdrawal from the Southeastern Utah Health District.
Commissioners, it's been an interesting process through this, this past year with our negotiations with the other counties in regards to our health department. Here at the end of fourth quarter, the discussions have been very positive and productive, we've got some things that we still need to work out. I don't know if you feel comfortable with this time rescinding the withdrawal, if not, we could table it and move it to the 20th, but if you do feel comfortable, we could move forward with our current MOU and strive towards a new interlocal agreement in the spring.
Why don't you talk a little bit about that MOU and what the next steps would be?
So the current agreement that the three counties have, which is over 40 years old, it, it needs a little updating, and in conjunction with some of the other interlocal agreements that are had from other health departments that encompass more than one county throughout the state, there are some things that, that we could do similar to theirs, such as restructuring how our board membership is, is derived from each county. Currently, we have board membership that, that is of three people from Grand County, three people from Amory County, three people from Carbon County. Other counties look at it as a formula of population, other counties look at it as a formula of taxable property, other counties look at it as a formula of a number of different things in how they put together their board membership, and also their, their funding for the various counties and how much money they put into the health department to help it go forward and to then match those funds with state and federal dollars. After, after we are able to thoroughly review what are the requirements and the, the structure of the, the new board, there are then the bylaws that also need to be updated. And the bylaws are the, how would you say, the, the responsibility of the new board that would be formed. And so as this, the new board gets put together, it'll have new faces on it, it'll have a new structure and new representation from the various counties, and that, that's kind of a high level of some of the things that have been discussed, and not, not to be inclusive of everything mentioned, are there a few other items that you'd like to include from our discussions?
I, I would, I'd like to talk just a little bit about the MOU and what that would really mean going forward, and then also what an interlocal agreement might look like after that, so that it can be reconstituted and formatted, because when we put this into play, it was according to state code with the notice being given of the withdrawal, but it also has to be canceled, that withdrawal, prior to the end of the year, so.
Do you want to read that then, or?
No, no, just, this isn't the MOU.
Right, so in the MOU, it talks about us, the three counties continuing to work together, that we've appointed Brady Bradford as the health director, that the health director will also serve as the executive secretary to the board, providing us with a lot of information and being our liaison with the Department of Health as well as the state agencies. Christian, I don't know if you'd want to touch on a few more items in regards to the Board of Health's MOU with the other counties?
I think a couple of the other items might have been, you know, processes by which committees will be formed to make hiring decisions in the future, conflict of interest provisions, those are spelled out, that we have spelled out very clearly, how members to the board will be appointed and who those members will be, and under what conditions they can be substituted for if necessary, and possibly also including budget contributions of each county, what each county will contribute and how those contributions will be calculated and formulated. I think those are some of the things that we wanted to include in there as well.
And we have tasked the health officer Brady Bradford with reviewing every other health department in the state and how they form their membership and how they have established, according to state statute, their interlocal agreements, so that this, this MOU is, is basically a preview of what the future interlocal agreement could be.
You know, I don't, I don't see any problem with withdrawing this, but I do know that we'd need to have that MOU on our next agenda on the 20th for approval, so we'll need to make sure that that happens so that we can move that forward.
The other option is you could, could put the withdrawal to be on the same agenda if you wanted, you could consider them both at the same time if you wanted to do that. That way you know that you're looking at a draft withdrawal that more or less satisfies what, what the intent is, or a draft MOU that satisfies that, that you're assured that that's sufficient to make you comfortable and feeling like it's okay to rescind that withdrawal. That's one option, unless you wanted to withdraw, formalize that tonight. To this point, there are no documents that have been signed and no formal agreements between any of the counties regarding the structure, however, actions have been taken that indicate that the parties are going to be able to work forward, and, and as you know, the resolution, the hiring of the new director was one part of that, not the only part, but was one part of it. So I guess I would tell you that you don't need to withdraw tonight, but you could, or, or we can consider both those items in tandem at the next meeting if you wish.
And just for informational purposes, Grand County last week did pass in their meeting to approve the MOU.
Okay. What, what would you like to do Commissioners, do you want to table this till the next one, or do you want to go ahead and, and put this forward?
In my review of the draft MOU, I don't foresee there being any significant changes between now and our next meeting. It's not that we have to do it today, but I would be okay rescinding our withdrawal.
Is that a motion?
Let's go ahead and make it a motion to rescind our withdrawal.
I think it's in the benefit of the county to do so, I'll second that.
Is there any other discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
We'll go ahead and put the MOU on then for?
For the 20th.
Final approval. Our next item is the approval for the 2018 regular commission meetings, which will be Ordinance Number 488. Commissioners, are there any other dates or concerns that you see going forward in the proposals there?
I think there was just the concern still on, unless it's been reviewed already for the July 3rd meeting, if it can be, you know, with obviously the, the 4th of July and everything, if the ad can run and we have proper time to advertise the day of the meeting, since that's when the paper comes out, does that make sense?
It does. We can, we can go ahead and leave it there, check that out, and then change it.
Leave it as a place marker for now, but review it as it gets closer. I don't know.
Any other thoughts on it Commissioners? It follows the same pattern that we have with the first and the third Wednesdays, except for that noted exception and a couple of other things that may come along.
I'll make a motion to approve Ordinance 488, approving the regular commission meetings for 2018.
And I'll second that motion.
And a second, all in favor?
Aye.
Our next item is adoption of the County Resource Management Plan as Ordinance 489.
Commissioners, I've given you a draft of that, there are a couple changes that I've inserted, misspelling of Commissioner Potter's name, I've corrected on the final one that Rita will give you, I've also inserted the name, the date of the general plan. As you recall, back in August of last year, the county adopted this resource management plan, which?
Not, not of last year, of this year.
I'm sorry, this year, that's correct, August of this year. You adopted the County Resource Management Plan, which was required to be adopted by statute. That plan is to set forth the way that you identify and develop and set guidelines for the management and use and preservation and conservation of the county's natural resources. So you adopted that plan and made it official, however, upon further review, we thought that that, and that plan is to be part of the general plan, and generally, when you amend the general plan, you're to do so by ordinance or resolution. And so even though since that time, we have treated that resource management plan as if it were part of the general plan, formally, since it is part of the general plan, it should be adopted by ordinance or resolution. And so we thought just to dot our i's and cross our t's that we ought to formally adopt it by, by ordinance, and, and specifically state in that ordinance that, that County Resource Management Plan is the official policy of the county, and it has the county's policies, goals, and guidelines with respect to the use, preservation, and management of the county's natural resources. So it doesn't change anything substantively within the plan, it just adds another formal layer of notification that the county has adopted that plan and considers it its actual and formal policy.
In one of the last discussions that I had with some of the departments out the state, going forward with these resource management plans, that they are a living document and that we should do an annual review, and that we should also, you know, make sure that any updates or changes that happen within the county take place, and so I know that we've adopted this, but to formalize it would certainly meet with what they were suggesting that we did.
And this is again, the first step in a, a series of steps towards not only the resource management plan, but the overall county general plan. And so I believe between Christian and Todd, who was the county planner, there will be a review of, of several of our aged documents here at the county and how we operate so that we can be up to date with all the federal and state agencies and coordinate appropriately. So it'll be probably every six months, reviews of something or another.
I'll make a motion to approve Ordinance 489, adopting the county, adopting the resource management plan into the county res, manage, into the county plan.
As Ordinance 489, right?
Yeah, that's what I stated.
And I'll second that.
Have a motion and a second, any other discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Next item is consideration and possible approval of Ordinance Number 490, revised business license ordinance. Christian?
Commissioners, this is something that Seth Obison and I are working on, we don't have a draft for you tonight. This year, the state legislature adopted a change that says you cannot charge a, charge for a business license for a business coming out of an individual's home, unless the impact of that business activity is in excess of what basically the general activity in the neighborhood was before. So we need to amend our ordinance to provide for that. State law, if we didn't do so, state law would just simply state that we have to comply with that and not charge for those home-based business licenses, but we want to formally put that into our business license. The other thing that we're looking at is developing some specific language as to short-term rentals, that makes it clear that they, those would have to be licensed in certain circumstances, and setting, setting some just very basic common sense guidelines to make sure short-term business, short-term rentals such as you'd find on Airbnb are being regulated and that they're, and that they're paying the required transient room tax and, and that they're not allowing certain neighborhoods to be overtaken by those kind of short-term business rentals. So we will, we intend to include language that includes a tax, or that requires a license for that type of activity as well. But that's what you'll be seeing, and we'll be making sure that all of our categories for the different licenses we have are up to date with our different businesses that we have in the county.
Sounds like we need to table this one.
Yes.
Bring it back.
That's right.
You want it on the agenda for the 20th?
We do, so that we can have those, business licenses are required to be renewed by the end of January, so we'd like our statute to match up with that as business license notices begin to go out.
Motion to table until the 20th?
Have a motion?
I'll second that.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Thank you. Next item is ratification of the Utah Department of Human Services contract to fund a Communities That Care Coalition Coordinator position. I don't see care in here, I don't know if one of you'd like to address that item.
You know, normally I would be the one to jump on that, but I don't know that I've actually received any information on this particular item. I wonder if we need to just hold off until the 20th for this one as well?
As, as I read it Commissioner, the, the thing that I saw is that it was a, again, an extension or a continuation of existing contracts from 10th month of this year to 6th month of 2020, and it is a funding amount showing that there are 30,000 total in regards to the dates that it would be applied, 18, 19, and 20, and that.
It's the 10,000 each year?
10,000 each year, which simply goes to help pay for that Care Coalition Coordinator.
The, is it the coordinator or the facilitator? They've got a funny titles there.
It was the coordinator.
Okay.
And they needed that back, and so that's why it's on the list as far as a ratification. So we're looking to ratify this ongoing contract that comes to us every year, either adjust or extend.
Well, I really don't find any reason to not approve it, because it's funds that have already been given, and it's just asking for ratification. If, if there's no questions from Commissioner Hopps, then I'll go ahead and make the motion to approve the ratification of the Utah Department of Human Services contract to fund a Communities That Care Coalition Coordinator position.
I'll second that.
Any other discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Thanks.
I, I don't foresee any reason to withhold that from them at this time.
Our next item then is a Open and Public Meetings Act training, which is required on an annual basis, and so we'll turn the time to you Christian.
Thanks Commissioners, that is correct, this training is required by statute to take place on an annual basis, so I'm just going to hit a few highlights of it. You've all received this training every year from me, at least once, and some of you that serve on other boards have received it two or three times a year, so nothing's going to be unfamiliar, I don't believe, but we'll just hit some of the highlights so we satisfy the, the state auditors on this. As you know Commissioners, the purpose of the Open and Public Meetings Act is to make sure that public bodies take their deliberations openly and take their actions openly, which means in an open and public meeting that the public is entitled to come to. And that's what you do, that's your practice, is to have those deliberations take place in your regularly scheduled meetings, or if special meetings need to be called, you do that in special meetings. Just hit a couple of the highlights here. With your meeting agendas, you are required to provide reasonable specificity in your agendas to notify the public as to the topics that will be addressed at the meeting. You've done that, I think the commission does a good job at making sure it's very clear what exactly is to be on the agenda and what's to be considered. That notice is to be published on the Utah Public Notice website, it's to be posted here at the county building where the meeting is held and where your headquarters are, and it's to be given to at least one newspaper of general circulation within the geographic jurisdiction. And it's my understanding that our practice is to give notice to both newspapers in the area, as well as all of the radio stations, and basically I think it's been our practice as well to give notice to any other person that's asked to be, put on our list to receive it within reason. So notice is given of, it's required to be given 24 hours prior to the meeting. Generally, we have our agendas sent out to the newspaper the Friday before, that's been an internal practice, is that we've set our agendas by the Friday before the, the meeting, but up until 24 hours prior to the meeting, you always have the right to amend the, the agenda and change things. You can also have an emergency meeting and add items after that if those matters are You can also have an emergency meeting and add items after that if those matters are of an emergent and urgent nature, which require immediate attention. Just a couple of things to be, as well. You can go into a closed session during a meeting even if your agenda does not indicate that you intend to go into a closed session, as long as the topic or the subject matter for which you're going into the closed session is one of the statutorily authorized purposes. So if it should ever arise that you need to go into a closed meeting, you can make a motion to do so. That motion has to be approved by two-thirds of you and of course, the reason has to be one that's authorized. Another thing to remember is a member of the public may raise a topic during an open meeting, but you are not required to address that person or allow that person to speak. If you choose to do so however, and you allow someone to raise a topic that's not on the agenda, you're not allowed to take any action on such a topic. My advice to you would be to not authorize that generally, to make it a practice that if people want to be, to speak, that they do so during public hearings that are properly noticed, or that they bring that matter to be considered to be put on the agenda first, rather than opening it up to an open forum at these meetings. So you followed that practice to this point and I would urge you to continue to do so. Wanted to talk about, just for a minute, what constitutes a meeting. Not every meeting is an open and public meeting. A meeting under the act is one that is convened by a public body, that's you, that's by a quorum of the public body, which you have convened, or in other words, you've agreed to meet, and it's where you meet to discuss, receive comments about, or act upon a matter over which a public body has jurisdiction or advisory power. So just as a reminder, even if you are not taking a formal vote on a matter, if you're simply receiving comments or discussing a matter, but it's a matter over which you have advisory power or jurisdiction and you're, and you're simply going to discuss things but not take a vote, that's the type of meeting that still needs to be noticed up and, and those discussions need to take place openly, even if no action is going to be taken. I know sometimes we're asked by persons who, who, who don't understand the Public Meetings Act to simply meet with you, to discuss something, they're not asking you to take action, they just want you to be advised of something, and they ask to meet with you outside of a public forum. This says you cannot do that as a quorum because you're receiving comments about a matter. Now, if you're receiving comments about a matter over which you absolutely have no advisory power or jurisdiction, I think that kind of meeting could take place without being noticed up. For example, suppose a federal agency said, "We want to advise you about a rule that we're going to put in effect, and we don't want to do this in public." And for some reason, the federal government likes to do things that way occasionally. They'll ask to meet with you privately and not in a public forum. I think at that point, you would have to decide, "Well, is this something that we have the right to advise you on and that you, the federal government, have to consider our comments?" If they do, if they do have to consider your comments, then it may be something that you'd say, "Well, we can't do this without noticing up the meeting because we have advisory power in this area." If it's something where they say, "No, County, we don't care what you say, we're putting this rule into play and there's nothing you can do about it, and we don't care what you think about it, we're just letting you know and we're coming down to tell you," that's a type of thing that I don't think would require you to notice up the meeting because you don't have jurisdiction over it, you don't have the right to give comments, and so in that case, I think there's nothing wrong with you either traveling as a body to attend a meeting where you're given that information or hosting somebody here for that. Let's say you have a committee, or you form a committee. If you form a committee as an ad hoc committee, say for a one-time purpose of reviewing changes to an ordinance, say you want to review changes to a procurement, to our county procurement policy, and you decide to form an ad hoc committee, is that committee's meeting required to be formally noticed up and made an open and public meeting? My opinion is that no, it's not because the statute says that a, a, a public body is one that is created by state, state code, or by ordinance or resolution. If you create an ad hoc committee for a one-time purpose, that's generally not, that's not going to be a standing body. And in my opinion, that kind of ad hoc committee is not created by resolution or by ordinance. It's, it's a one-time committee that's organized for a specific purpose and therefore its meetings would not be required to be public meetings. Let's say you form a committee that's to be a standing committee, such as a, you know, a safety committee that's going to regularly meet and review things, and you create a, a resolution or an ordinance which sets out the specific tasks that that committee is supposed to do. In that case, that would probably be a public body whose meetings would have to be noticed up formally and, and the public would be entitled to come and attend, and notice would have to be given for those. Want to emphasize to you also that it is not a public meeting, it's not a meeting if you are convened full, solely for the discussion or implementation of administrative or operational matters. So typically, one, one way to think of this often, that often applies is if you're deciding who is to do a job, or what the job is that's to be done, that's, that would probably be typically a, something that would come before you and you'd put on your agenda, that you would notice up formally. If it's simply a matter of how the job's to be done, rather than who's to do the job, say you're not, you're not amending somebody's job description, you're not contracting something out, but you're simply assigning a, a task within a department to do and, or you're, you're directing a department to do a task that they'd already be charged with, but you're telling them to do a, do it a certain way, then that would generally be considered an administrative or an operational matter. For example, let's say you told the county road department, the county road department said, came to you and said, "You know, we'd want, we want to use more sand than salt on our roads this year. We want to change the composition of how we, of how we take care of our roads." I think that would be an operational matter for which you would not have to formally convene as a meeting. Or if the road department said, "We want to make it a priority to do, you know, we're going to assign these trucks to do these roads, and these trucks to do these roads, and these drivers to take care of these roads." Well, that's probably not as big a deal. But if you're going to say, "We're not going to, we're going to not do certain roads this year, or we don't have the money to do certain roads, or we're going to assign the cleaning of roads or parking lots to a different department other than the road department," then that would probably be something that would have to come before you to formally decide in the commission meeting. So if you're determining whether or not to do a task, I would submit that's probably an executive decision that should be made in the meeting. If you're deciding how to do a task or directing a department within the department, or directing employees within a department, how to perform that task, that would generally be an administrative or operational matter which would not come before you formally in an open and public meeting. With respect to emergency meetings, if there is ever a requirement to meet on an emergency basis, say for a natural emergency or disaster, you can meet by, even if you don't have time to give the newspaper or the public twenty-four hours' notice, you simply have to give what is called the best notice practicable of the time and place of the meeting and of the discussion to take place. A majority of the members must approve of the emergency meeting and an attempt must be made to notify the members of the board, to notify all of you before you have the meeting. But you can have an emergency meeting with less than twenty-four hours' notice if, if it's of an, an urgent nature. Let's talk about closed meetings for just a minute. When can you have a closed meeting? First of all, you can't get to a closed meeting or have a closed meeting without first starting in a properly noticed, open and public meeting. So technically, a meeting to discuss operational or administrative matters is really not a meeting, it's not a closed meeting, and it would be incorrect to, to call it a closed meeting because that, it's simply not a meeting under the act. A closed meeting always starts out with an item that's been put on an agenda in the open meeting. In order to go into a closed meeting, you have to vote during the open portion of the meeting, and there must be a two-thirds vote approving going into the closed meeting, and the motion to go into closed meeting must state the grounds for going into the closed meeting. And of course, we continue to record those closed meetings, those recordings are kept, but they remain private and those meeting recordings are not available to the public unless, unless a judge orders them to be made available. The only reason you would not record the proceedings of a closed meeting is if it's to discuss the character or competency of an individual, in which case, the chairman of the board is to make an affidavit certifying that that was the reason for the, going into the closed session. And if that is, if that affidavit is made, then it's not necessary to record or keep the minutes of the closed session. So here are the, here are some of the main reasons by which you may go into a closed session under, under the statute. Again, the first is to discuss the character, professional competence, or physical or mental health of an individual. Sometimes as a shorthand, we call this discussing a personnel issue, but not all personnel issues involve character, competence, or mental or physical health, and so many such things, if they can't be dealt with administratively, would have to be considered in the open portion of the meeting. You can go into a closed session to discuss those things with respect to an individual, regardless of whether the individual is a county employee or somebody else. So if you have a contractor who's not performing up to the terms of the contract, you can go into a closed session to discuss his performance. Other grounds for going into a closed session include a strategy session for, to discuss pending or reasonably imminent litigation. So if litigation is ongoing, you need to discuss settlement proposals, tactics for litigation, things that need to be done to take care of litigation as it goes forward. That can all be done in a closed session. Collective bargaining, strategy sessions, and finally, maybe another main one is discussion of the purchase or sale of real property, including water shares, where if those discussions took place in the, out in the open, it would, it would basically ruin the county's chances to get the best possible price on the sale or purchase of property. You can go into closed session to discuss making offers and, or receiving offers for, for real property. The deployment of security personnel, devices, or systems is also a valid reason to go into a closed session. Those types of things are also not subject to disclosure under grandma. Investigative proceedings regarding allegations of criminal conduct, those are all, that can also be discussed in a closed session. Any questions on closed sessions? With respect to minutes and keeping, and recording minutes, I think we follow this to the T. Minutes are to be kept of all open public meetings. They're to include the date, time, and place of meeting and a record of all the commissioners attending. That's been done. I know Lori does that regularly and consistently. It's to include a substance, the substance of all matters discussed, proposed, or decided by the public body. This may include a summary of comments made by members of the public body. In the interest of full disclosure, I think Lori and Seth have gone beyond, above and beyond in, in the minutes that they've taken, in that they always include a summary of all the comments made, and so we have generally a very good and complete record for the minutes that this body has made. A record by individual name of each vote taken, that's always been done. Where also to include the name of each person recognized by the presiding member of the body who is allowed to provide testimony or comments to the public body and a brief summary of those comments. So when a, a member of the public is allowed to speak, those comments are to be included and that person's name is to be included. This statute also makes it clear that the presiding member of the commission at the time, the chairman, has the discretion, is the one who has the discretion in determining whether or not a member would be allowed, a member of the public would be allowed to speak at a public meeting that's not a public hearing if they raise their hand and requested to do so. It's, it's up to the, this appears that it's up to the discretion of the chairman to allow that to happen. Another note, pending minutes that have not yet been approved are subject to grandma and must contain a disclosure that they are pending minutes and are subject to change until approved. So we need to make sure that's on all of our drafts of all of our minutes, that these are just drafts and that they are subject to change. Pending minutes are to be available within thirty days of the meeting, and approved minutes are to be made available within three days after being approved. We also, as you know, keep an audio recording of all meetings in a format that meets long-term storage requirements. Statute doesn't say more than that, so I think it's up to Barry to guide us on how we do that. And, and those audio recordings are to be made available to the public within three days after the meeting. If you take a site visit, you're not required to keep an audio recording. Finally, just a couple of things here. Under the statute, if a person willfully disrupts, disrupts a meeting to the extent that orderly conduct is compromised, you can remove a person from the meeting. Final action taken in violation of the meeting is voidable by a court if, if an appeal is made to the court within ninety days of the action. And finally, there is a, a case law exception to open and, open deliberations when you are performing a judicial, a quasi-judicial function, such as weighing a, if, if you are acting in a quasi-judicial, as a quasi-judicial body, say you've got an appeal of some kind of employment procedure before you, and somebody's, has appealed an employment decision that you've made, that's typically considered a quasi-judicial function. Your deliberations in that circumstance would not be subject to the public, Open and Public Meetings Act. You can deliberate behind closed doors and that's, that's not considered a closed meeting, that's just a, a case law exemption to the Public and, Open and Public Meetings Act. So I can answer any questions if you have any, but I think that was, that was pretty exhaustive and exhausting and very boring, and I think we've satisfied the, the statute once again this year for the auditors. So if you have any questions, I'm happy to answer those.
I do have one in regards to the audio recording because we have the recording, but we also then have the, the videoing of our meetings. How does that apply?
I don't, you know, I don't know that we're required to keep a video recording. I haven't looked at that recently, to tell you the truth. I know we do make those video recordings available, and by statute, we are encouraged to give as much notice and make our meetings as accessible as possible, but I don't know that we're required to keep those. But we can, we can check and see, and maybe somebody in here knows more than I do on video recordings, but I don't think we're required to keep video recordings.
Just, just the audio?
That's right.
I just wondered because you can run into, you know, storage.
Yeah, it's a lot of data, I think.
How do you maintain that data and so? Just curious on that one.
I'll, I'll verify, but I'm quite sure we're only required to keep the audio recordings.
Any other questions? Thank you, Christian.
Thank you.
Our next items are our public hearing, which we need to start, we cannot start until six P.M., so we'll take a short recess and reconvene at six o'clock. So we'll take a short recess and reconvene at, uh, six o'clock and move into those. We also, uh, have a sign-up sheet if you want to speak in those meetings. I'm just here as you come into the commission chamber, so we invite you to go ahead and sign up at this point in time, anybody that's here. Uh, we will open all three of those public hearings at the same time and, uh, and act accordingly as far as the tax increase that we've taken a vote on, uh, to not, um, impose that tax and close that meeting, and then we will review the adjustments to the budget for two thousand and seventeen and also the proposed two thousand and eighteen budget at that time. So could we have a motion to recess until six o'clock hour?
I'll make that motion.
I'll second that.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Thank you.